I'd like to call to order the May 19th, 2025 Board Meeting to Order. As to Item B, I'd ask everybody please to stand. Ask Ms. Jewitt.
A moment of silence. I hope that we have a wonderful summer. Ms. Jewitt, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Leagues.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
On to Item 1C, which is the adoption of the Agenda and Consent Agenda Items. I would move to amend the agenda by deferring the Executive Session Item regarding the Procurement Review Panel to a future special call meeting. I've made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Now that it has been second and I've opened up for my reason. One of the reasons I'd like to do it is a special call meeting. Our CFO had a personal matter and it's not available to be here. This is a very complicated matter and I think it's better held in a special call meeting. We have to hold it so all trustees know. I'd like to schedule that as a Zoom meeting before June 11th because that is that we are under a timeframe. So that's why I'm making this motion to on the agenda and that's the only issue. Any further comments or anything? Hearing none, I'd like to bring it up for a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. The agenda is approved as amended. Onto the approval of the Board Minutes Item 1D. And Item 2E. I'd like to make a motion and 2E and 2F. And that'd be for to approve the minutes of April 28th, 2025 Board Meeting, the May 12th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, and the May 12th, 2025 Special Call Board Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion regarding the minutes or any requests for any changes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as published. Onto Item 2A, the public hearing on, wouldn't I get bounced out?
You were in.
Yeah.
You were in.
I know.
Said too, that's why maybe you're off.
Yeah.
There you go.
There we go.
The public hearing on the FY '26 Budget. And this was advertised in the Post and Courier on May 3rd, 2025. The email addresses were provided to the public. Any comments the public had ahead of the hearing have been given. Questions and comments will be compiled and individuals will be given two minutes to speak. And we have two that have written or have requested to speak on it. First would be Char Fitzwater and Clara Lobo. If you two could come up, the floor is yours. Please speak your name clearly in the mic.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Char Fitzwater. Thank you for providing this opportunity for comment on the $1.7 billion budget. I have a few brief questions and comments. I'd like to know what the Board is including in the fiscal '26 budget on three very small items, but they were mentioned at the Budget Workshop. The first is pay to Board members, you, for your role, which reportedly lags peers of similar size. The second is possibly increasing Board member training budget and travel stipends. The third is the possibility of appointing a Board member to liaise with a legislative delegation and receive a stipend. On these three, the Board oversees the $1.7 billion budget, 51,000 students with more than 6,000 employees. Commensurate compensation for your Board members is appropriate. Second, a recent Board conversation demonstrated how one Board member struggled to be able to participate in valuable training and other conversations have pointed out the importance of training for Board members. Please fund Board member training and travel stipends to help you at a higher level, to help you stay abreast of key issues. Third, there's a proposal, there was a mention of a proposal for a legislative liaison to receive a stipend, being a Board member, as I understood it. And if that's the go forward, please clarify the responsibilities of the liaison and clarify why a stipend would be appropriate, particularly since other Board members here serve on the Demanding Audit and Finance Committee and our liaisons elsewhere. I'd like to heartily endorse the funding toward competitive compensation for our teachers and staff. We live in an expensive area with a dearth of affordable housing. This is a strategic imperative. At the May Audit and Finance Committee meeting, there was helpful discussion addressing risks and worst case considerations. It's encouraging knowing that the administration is considering responses to downside possibilities. And finally, the weighted student funding was implemented this year to support student success. It's required significant work, planning, and evaluation with improvements clearly underway. Continuation of the weighted student funding in the proposed fiscal '26 budget is commendable and provides a flexible framework for the future. Thank you for your consideration for all you do.
Is Clara Lobo in? No, please. The podium's yours.
Hello, my name is Clara Lobo and I don't know if I'm going to speak out of turn or not, but a friend of mine asked me to speak my thoughts on whether on how much, how much we ought to be paying our teachers. So this is my take on it. I've been on both sides of the street, so, and this is my personal experience. So it might not be the same for everyone. I was born in Uganda and did most of my schooling there except for my post-grad training in education in that London. And I taught all over the world, sometimes less than six months. But I've always found one thing, that every time I left a school, every children, every child was engraved in my heart. And I taught in England, I taught in Uganda, I taught in India. I taught in private schools, I taught in convent schools, I taught in public schools. And this is my experience, that every time I taught, regardless of the time, every child was in my heart. And when I left my job, for one reason or another, or another, mostly because I found myself pregnant with a child. So.
Lot of kids.
So I cried for a couple of days. Then I came to America and at my, and I found that people of my age weren't having children. Because as you know, in the 60s, people were of the opinion that you make love and not war. So we didn't have many children in schools. So I could not get a job as a teacher. So I had a science degree and I switched to working in a hospital for the lab. And then I got my license in medical technology was, oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Lobo, I'm gonna give you another 30 seconds because I know you can't see it, but if you could wrap it up, please.
Okay. And so when I left my job after 25 years, I wrote my resignation letter. I quit when seven years were left to retire and I walked out in the sun and I never looked back. I didn't wish anyone goodbye, I just had no feelings. So I just wanted to know that teachers need respect and love. And it's a, it is a vocation, not a profession. Because you do it for love of a child, you don't do it because of the money you make. Okay, so I just want people to make that distinction. Okay, so I don't know if, the end of it is the conclusion I've drawn is that I do not know if increasing pay to teachers will do more than respecting them and loving them. And parents need to be responsible for teaching their children that. Okay, thank you for letting me say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes the public hearing on the FY '26 Budget. We will now move on to Item 2A. And before I start, I want to make it clear.
3A.
Excuse me?
3A, sir.
Did I miss one?
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. 3A, which is second reading of the FY '25-'26 Budget. Before, before we move forward, in accordance to Roberts' Rules, debate is consistent with our duty to ensure a fair and orderly meeting. The chair is the authority to set the reasonable limits on debate when a motion is pending. Specifically, the rule states that presiding officer may recognize members for a set time limit when the body has not adopted a specific rule to the contrary. For tonight's vote on the 2026 Budget, I'm granting each trustee up to two minutes to speak, for against the motion. This is not a general discussion period, but the final opportunity for Board members to state their positions before we proceed to a vote. This format ensures that each trustee has an equal opportunity to speak while also respecting the agenda in the public time. So with that being said, I have a motion to approve the second reading of the FY '25 Budget. Do I have a motion?
I move. Second.
I will open it up for debate. And I would like to start off, take it up and take my first two minutes just to state that I am proud to vote in favor of this budget. It's a truly historic step for our district. For the first time, we're approving a balanced budget in May. It's giving our schools a full month, you know, to start to work and get ready. That kind of lead time strengthens the operations across the board and reflects its strategic planning we've worked for since, you know, some of us were elected three years ago and our new members that have been working very hard with us during this process. What makes me confident in this budget is the quality and credibility of the work behind it. Our superintendent, our CFO, who cannot be here tonight, and staff have provided us with sound projections that support one of the most significant investments we've made. Meaningful pay raises to our teachers, principals, and support staff. That investment is not only reasonable, it is sustainable. This budget also reflects innovation through the student-weighted formula championed by our superintendent. We are empowering school leaders to use funds based on the needs of their own students, whether that's hiring additional literacy and math coaches, supporting multilingual learners, or expanding services for students with special needs. It is the kind of local control that turns a budget into a tool for student success. And finally, I want to thank the members of our Audit and Finance Committee and our chairman, our chairwoman, Ms. Leah. Experienced community professionals gave this budget their full endorsement. That means a lot. It tells me that we're on the right path, financially responsible, academically focused, and future-ready. With that, I will now ask, are there any other Board members who would like to comment? My Board recognizes Ms. McKinnon.
Okay. I will vote aye on the fiscal year 2026 Budget. I will address the why, the how, and the who with you now. Why? This budget covers the purpose of why every person in this room should be here. We are all here to secure the education of every student enrolled in our Charleston County School District. The how, how does this budget accomplish that? Students have transportation to a school. The school building is in good operating condition. The student is greeted by a principal, teacher, teacher's assistant, lunchroom worker, custodian, school nurse, librarian, and administration who receive salaries that set a record. Those salaries permit the employee to concentrate on the education of every student. Wraparound services needed by some students and their families are addressed. Students in poverty, multilingual learners, and students with disabilities are especially provided for in the increase for weighted student funding. Providing for them helps everyone in their building. The who, who benefits from this budget? Every one of the 50,000-plus children at CCSD, every one of the 6,300-plus employees, every resident in Charleston County is, there is no tax increase and there is a strategy of sustainability. The fund balance is even higher than required by policy. Back to the why. No, I did not use dollar amounts in my comments. Those numbers have been studied by me and are available for all to read. No, I did not mention accolades as those have been given throughout the budget process. What matters the most tonight for our students is their education and their future. This budget provides the opportunity for that. Now let's start working together for our students.
The Chair recognizes Chairwoman of Audit and Finance, Ms. Watley.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. First of all, I would just like to say what an honor and a privilege it's been to work along the district staff and our CFO during this budget process and as well as the rest of the Board members who have emailed lots of very in-depth questions and digging. And I appreciate the process that has gone on. I especially applaud the transparent budget book that we've been provided. When we were elected three years ago, the contrast in this budget and this budget process compared to the way that it was done three years ago and the state of the district three years ago is truly, it's been, I won't say breathtaking, but it's been amazing and refreshing. And I really think the work of our CFO, who's done so much to streamline and go through the district and with the help of the superintendent, as the sunset of ESAR was happening, to streamline and test all the programs that we had to maximize the efficiency of the running of the district in streamlining the organizational chart and the other measures that have been taken so that we can conserve the monies that the public entrusts to us so that we can streamline and make efficient the running and then to funnel those funds into the classroom. The creation and passage of a budget prior to June is unprecedented in CCSD. Again, it goes back to applauding the efficient work of our new CFO. We've increased the teacher pay. We, last year, we became top in the state. This year, if this budget passes tonight, we will be leading the southeastern region. We've increased our classified pay to 100% market value and I think that we're gonna even take it a little above and beyond that now. We've increased classroom support through the weighted student formula to especially funnel monies into our more disadvantaged students. We've decreased the employee after-school care costs with this budget and we've increased employee daycare in this budget. A lot of things to applaud and celebrate. And again, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve in this capacity as Chair of Audit and Finance. Thank you.
Dr. Temple.
Thank you very much. I will ditto the remarks that you all have made on specifics because they're all true. I want to say that I am ecstatic that we have a budget that supports our teachers, our staff, our principals because we know that increasing their pay impacts the quality of education, the retention of quality employees at all lists, all levels of our system, the recruitment of people who want to be in our system and the ability for them to live on the wages versus taking on more jobs to make ends meet. Now they can focus on their students and learning and their teaching and the services that they provide day in and day out. I do want to say this, that I went to the School Boards Association meeting and I learned about something and another way to help our students and families who are in alternative programs. The Board, you all have read the proposal that was put together by Dr. Coakley's office and our superintendent. And I want to advocate, if there's any way that we can support that, I think this would be really good because we can support our kids and teach them their academics and better behavior, but we also need to engage their families. And that proposal is very strong and I would hope that we could find a way to fund it. If not, hopefully, we could fund it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Ms. Lieber.
Thank you. I actually appreciate all of my Board members and everything they're going to say. And I ditto everything. I'm actually, though, I'm not going to be voting for this budget on a few purposes, but again, I ditto everything that they have said. And the only reason why I'm not going to approve the budget is two reasons. One is that I believe the research of that a child that receives learning through paper versus online is six to eight times more effective when they receive it on paper instead of receiving their learning online. And I think that goes against our policies about academic rigor and academic stamina. So in this situation, I'll be voting no, but not for the reasons that you can expect. The other thing that I will be, I just have a question. I found a really, by the comments that I've received from the public about improving the parent and community relationship with the students. And I want to take the line item about the education for parents or for adult education. And I'd like to see, I mean, maybe this is not in this budget, but at least work toward getting more community and parent involvement and spending more money on that. And so it's a negative of 1.7 million and I'd like to see that turn in the other direction and increase the program for that. And I'll see if I could be real quick in some of the just the positive things. It is not just a question of dollars, it is a question of values. Do we value engineers more than education because of the bridges they build? The code they write, the machines they perfect? Or are we missing the quiet, patient architect of society? The ones shaping our minds that will design tomorrow's solutions? I can't even see. Engine, anyway, that's a positive for the teachers.
Ms. Jewitt.
I don't, I didn't prepare a speech for the budget. But I will say that I'm impressed by how thorough things have been and how easy it has been to find the data, to get the information. Anytime I've had a question, I've ended up finding the answers generally in the budget book, which is great. I've spent hours with Mr. Prentice going over anything else I had questions on. I am very hopeful that it comes to fruition the way that it looks. You know, obviously, no one knows what's the future holds. And our future is unique right now. So I am very hopeful that we can continue this budget the way that it looks and the way that it is and we can have an amazing school system, which I think we're building towards. So thank you guys for everything you've done.
Mr. Hollingstead.
I'll try to make this short. I'll give you a little short timeline into my first tenure on this board. There's only one person here I think we really need to give an applause to, and let me tell you why, and that's Bill Brigman. No, seriously. Mr. Brigman can remember back some six or seven years ago when the past Board would give him a lot of heckler about trying to recruit and retain teachers. We tried bonuses, which did not work. We lost students from historical black colleges that went over to other counties because of the bonuses and packages. Mr. Brigman stuck with this for about eight years, eight to six, eight to seven years. And he brought it to where it's at right now. Speaking from an old head, there's not too many people left in this room. I think we need to give a heartfelt applause to him because he's stuck with it. He's still here and he's still out today. So if you don't mind me, guys, give him applause, please.
For the record, he's been around a lot more than six years.
Well, he's been working on this for six, seven years.
Longer than that, was all I said. Look at that gray in his hair.
Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too echo the comments made by my colleagues. And let me give a big shout out to the Audit and Finance Committee. We've been in this for, this is our third budget and this was the least stressful budget season. And now I will speak to my constituents of District 8. To the constituents of District 8, I am voting yes on the FY '26 Charleston County School Board Budget because it reflects a strong commitment to students, staff, and our schools. The superintendent and the CFO presented this board with a fiscally responsible budget that prioritized academic achievement and supports our educators. As with the prior and current year student-weighted student funding allocations, this budget will be approved tonight with the clear expectations that the Board would be regularly briefed on the return of our investments. We owe it to our students and to the taxpayers who entrust us with their dollars to ensure that every expenditure is advancing equity, excellence, and measurable outcomes across the district. Thank you again for presenting us with the balanced budget on time.
Bring it home, Ms. Bailey.
I'm gonna keep this brief. I ditto everything that everyone else has said, but I am so excited and I am so happy about the wisdom, the knowledge, and understanding that has gone into putting this budget together. And I just want to thank again Mr. Prentice and his team, Ms. Anita, and everybody else that had a hand in putting this together. And I also want to say, I too want to see more money put into parents being involved in our school system because our parents are our children's first teacher. And when they come in and these kids see their parents being involved in our school system and educating them, that's the best thing that any child could ever want to hope for. So I too want to see more monies going into parental involvement in each and every one of our schools across Charleston County.
With that, I would like to close all debate and ask Ms. Trudy if you could please bring the motion up for vote. Trustees, please cast your vote. And the budget passes.
Mr. Grabowski, if I may, just very, very quickly, because I know we have a lengthy agenda, just say thank you to all the trustees. Mr. Prentice had to leave town on a family emergency and really did not plan not to be here for this momentous occasion, but it's been a delight to work with each of you this season. I can speak to your constituents in that you've all dedicated hours exchanging with us, being very thoughtful about this work. Dr. Temple's asked us 14 times about that does not meets. And she's been diligent and kind and understanding and meeting us halfway to make sure that you understand the impact of the decision. So I definitely want to thank the Audit Finance Committee. We have a fine CFO and a fine staff. Jessica's here representing her tonight. Mrs. Carr, we appreciate you and the work that you all have done. But again, trustees, in your role as a governing body, you have really just been exceptional to work alongside, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And on to Item Number Four. Ms. Denny, special recognitions.
Thank you, Chair Grabowski. We have so much to celebrate today in CCSD. First, I'd like to First, I'd like to invite the Beust Academy State Book Competition winners to the front of the room. Hey, Ansley. Beust Academy fourth grader Ansley Gretz Miller won Enlighten SC's Children's Book Challenge this year. The statewide contest invited fourth and fifth grade students in South Carolina to write and illustrate a children's book focused on staying safe around electricity. Ansley's exceptional work earned her recognition both locally and statewide. Students created books that creatively integrate the theme of electricity safety while showcasing the connection between electric cooperatives and the community. Ansley's book stood out for its originality and thoughtful portrayal of these themes. Thanks, Principal White. As a statewide grand prize winner, Ansley received a monetary award. In addition, Ansley's book will be published and distributed as a bound copy to elementary schools throughout South Carolina. Congratulations, Ansley. Trustees, if you'd join Ansley for a photo, we'd be appreciative. I'd like to next invite the Lucy Beckham High School Boys Lacrosse Team to the front of the room. Gentlemen, thanks for joining us. Next up, we have the Lucy Beckham High School Boys Lacrosse Team. The Bengals maintained their dynasty with a 14.5 victory over Nation Ford in the South Carolina High School League 5A Division II State Finals earlier this month in Ermo. This is the Bengals' fourth state title in a row. Bear Hankins and Connor Simmons led Beckham's offense with three goals each. Defensemen Brooks, Leland, and goalie Luke Fredericks, who had nine saves, anchored the defensive effort. The Bengals, who finished the season with a 17-3 record, were led by captains Connor Simmons, Bear Hankins, Colton Bennett, and Grant Gallo through the year. And their head coach is Jason Jeffery. Congratulations, Bengal.
I appreciate you doing this. Really good day. It's very nice.
Wando High School Boys Lacrosse, I'd like to invite you to the front of the boardroom. We have one more lacrosse state champion. The Wando High School Boys, the Warriors dominated Dorman 18 to 1 in the Division 5A, in the 5A Division One State Championship. Wando set the record for the largest margin of victory, 17 goals, in a South Carolina High School League League 5A title game. Connor Coretta led the Warriors' attack with three goals in the championship, but they were dominant throughout the playoffs. Wando outscored opponents. Four. Oh, okay, four. Got it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to speak to my writer. Wando outscored opponents by a 54 to 4 margin over the three postseason contests. This was Wando's second straight state title and ninth in program history. Wando finished the season with a 16 and 2 record. Congratulations, Wando.
Wow. I'm glad you're the coach. I'm like, wow.
So our next special recognition, we'd like to highlight the long time service of Dr. Ron McWort, who is here tonight with his wife Jane to honor some of our graduating seniors. I had the pleasure of serving under the leadership of Dr. McWort, who was one of my mentors, and he led with lots of heart, lots of purpose, and a whole lot of strategy. And so, Dr. McWort, it's an honor to have you here tonight to help present the Ron McWort Mark Cobb Scholarship. As you know, Mark Cobb was also a longstanding employee in our facility's maintenance division, who was the heart and soul of this district. And I served alongside him, too. And it was always a pleasure to come to work with someone who others wanted to follow. Dr. McWort, you are one of those, and and Mr. Cobb was as well. And so if you'll come up and help as Mrs. Denny honors our next group of students, come on up, Dr. McWort, and Ms. Jane, feel free to join him. You're just gonna stay right there? Okay, that's fine.
While Dr. McWort is making his way to the front of the boardroom, I'd like to invite Heather Anderson, Director of School Counseling Services, to the podium to lead the recognition of the Mark Cobb Memorial and Dr. Ron McWort Scholarship. While Ms. Anderson's coming to the podium, I'd like to invite recipients to join the board at the front of the boardroom. Following the recognition, we'd be honored if you would take a photo with the Board of Trustees to mark this special occasion.
Good evening. It's my honor to introduce this year's recipients of the Mark Cobb Memorial Ron McWort Scholarship, a distinguished award that celebrates exceptional graduating seniors whose parent or guardian is employed with our school district. The scholarship was established to honor the memory of Mr. Mark Cobb, a beloved and dedicated educator whose legacy continues to inspire, and to recognize Dr. Ron McWort, an example of educational leadership and service who has made a lasting impact on our school community. At this time, I'd like to again welcome Dr. McWort. This year, the School Counseling Service Department was proud to receive a record number of applications, 39 in total, for an exceptional group of students representing schools from across our district. Each application was thoroughly reviewed by a district panel using a rubric that assessed teacher recommendation statements, extracurricular involvement, leadership, and the strength of a personal statement that you all wrote. The quality of this year's applicant pool was truly inspiring. After careful review, we are thrilled to announce our eight 2025 scholarship recipients. Each of these students have demonstrated remarkable commitment to their academic journey, leadership in their schools and communities, and a clear vision for your future. Each winner will receive a one-time scholarship of $2,500 sent to their college or university of their choice. Please join me in celebrating these outstanding students and congratulating them on a well-deserved recognition. Theodora Harrell, School of the Arts, Attending the College of Charleston. John Asher Huggins, Lucy Beckham High School, Attending the University of Virginia. Charlotte Newkirk, Lucy Beckham High School, Attending Clemson University. Triton Joshua Pinkney, School of the Arts, Attending Winthrop University. And Samantha Pryor, School of the Arts, Attending Charleston Southern University. But before we move on, I'd like to take one more moment to recognize three outstanding students who were also awarded this scholarship but were not able to be with us tonight. Hank Epley, Lucy Beckham High School, Attending the Citadel. Laurel Dursey, Academic Magnet High School, Attending Clemson University. And Lane Floyd, James Island Charter High School, Attending the Citadel. One final congratulations again to you, students at the Cobb-McWort Scholars. We're so proud of you and look forward to all the ways you will continue to lead and succeed.
Okay, everybody, look here at Ms. Sully.
I'd now like to invite Ms. Sherry Bell, Executive Director of the Department of Exceptional Children, to the podium to honor three very special groups of exceptional professionals. While Ms. Bell is coming to the podium, would our occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, and audiologists join the trustees at the front of the room?
Good evening, board of trustee members. Thank you so much for letting us have the honor and privilege tonight of introducing this amazing group of individuals. Tonight is my honor to recognize and celebrate three groups of exceptional professionals who play a critical role in supporting the success and well-being of our students, our occupational therapists, speech and language pathologists, and our district audiologist. I also want to recognize Ms. Andrea Mick, who serves as the Assistant Director of Specialized Support Services. She is up there with them today that leads this amazing group. And of course, I just want you to share, this is not even half of the whole team of professionals that were able to be with us tonight. And then also Elizabeth Young, she could not be here with us tonight, but she serves as the Interim Assistant Executive Director of the Department of Exceptional Children. As some of you all may know, April was National Occupational Therapy Month, and May is National Speech Hearing and Language Month, making this a perfect time to highlight the outstanding contributions that these specialists make to our schools and to the lives of our students every day. Our occupational therapists are instrumental in helping students access the curriculum and the school environment as independently as possible. From building fine motor skills needed to hold a pencil to supporting students with self-care routines, to adapting materials and spaces for those with complex needs, our OTs empower students to engage, participate, and thrive. Their work ensures that every student has the tools and opportunities needed to succeed. Our speech and language pathologists empower students by helping them find their voices, both literally and figuratively. Whether assisting a preschooler in saying their first clear words, supporting a middle school student with social communication skills, or helping a high schooler advocate for themselves, our SLPs our SLPs open doors to learning relationships and lifelong success. We also want to recognize the vital work of our district audiologist, Ms. Laura Stone, who's unable to be with us tonight. But her expertise ensures that students with hearing challenges are identified, supported, and provided with the tools necessary to access instruction fully. From conducting evaluations to fitting assistive technology, the district audiologist plays an essential role in connecting students to their learning and their world. Each of these roles require incredible expertise, creativity, patience, and compassion. This group of dedicated professionals often work quietly behind the scenes, but their impact on students' growth, communication, confidence, and independence is profound and lasting. So on behalf of the Department of Exceptional Children and the entire district leadership team, I want to extend our heartfelt appreciation for the remarkable service, commitment, and heart that our occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, and audiologists bring to their work each day.
That's all for this evening, Mr. Grabowski. We want to thank the board for taking the time to recognize the people who really make the work happen in the Charleston County School District. So thank you for bearing with us and acknowledging their hard-earned efforts. Mr. Grabowski?
Thank you. We will move on to item five, which is our public comments. And I'm sure we have the veterans coming up to speak, so you know the rules. It's two minutes. Please keep it on topic to something that's obviously involving the district. Please no name-calling or pointing out any names. And with that, we will move on. Ms. Fitzwater, Ms. Ryan Lavelle, and Clara Lobo.
I wonder if you were talking about me as a veteran. Okay. It's Dr. Fitz, by the way.
I stand corrected.
Good evening, I'm Shar Fitzwater. Properly executed parliamentary procedure supports constructive trustee dialogue and effective decision-making in a respectful environment. Divergent perspectives are invited, including minority perspectives. Using the time effectively, equal voice, and clear decision-making are achieved in efficient meetings. All members of a board benefit from understanding parliamentary procedure, such as through the National Association of Parliamentarians training. Optimally, a trained parliamentarian who is not a board member ensures legality of the meetings. The parliamentarian makes sure all items are properly placed on the agenda, assists when questions are raised, and has a voice in the meetings to ensure the board follows proper procedures. I invite this board to consider your path forward. Please ensure questions regarding parliamentary procedure are answered. Please do not rely on "we've done this before." Please help us to have that transparency from your efforts and your processes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Laville. I've come to address the board regarding the charter renewal for the Allegro Charter School for Music. I'm a parent of a sixth grader who is currently attending there, and I'm also a professional musician who has served as a coach for Allegro students for multiple years. And for those two reasons, I was also asked to run and was elected to the Allegro Board this past March. The Allegro Board thanks the CCSD Board for its collaboration and support for the past ten years. Allegro, while having a Title I designation, has increasing numbers of student applications, has procured a permanent space, and has had higher test scores than schools with similar populations, and also has received a good rating on its state report card. We ask and look forward to our continuing collaboration in serving Charleston County students. Lastly, I invite you to attend our school's graduation on May 28th at the Charleston Music Hall, followed by the yearly Battle of the Bands featuring our very own students. Thank you for your time.
Hello, again, and I'm here, I'm from Johns, I'm from Johns Island, and I have a interest in that how it grows. So I've come up with this idea of construction science, which hopefully will, hopefully with everybody's support, might be introduced to St. John's High School. Construction science is a good improvement because you can start off from ninth grade and get through Trident, a associate's degree. And that might, that will probably, and I'm not quite sure of the specifics, but that would include plumbing, HVAC, and electrical work. So every student can participate, those who are bright and those who want to hit the boat running when they graduate from high school. So those who want to hit the boat running can take a piece of paper for plumbing or electrical work and get a job. Those who want to proceed to higher education can go to the Citadel or Clemson and get a two, get a four-year degree in two years because they can, they can take their two years of an associate and get it. And they can turn into, from my understanding, and I don't, I'm not a expert on something like construction, they can get, they can be a developer. And those who want to go to the highest level and proceed to the highest level, and the world is that oyster as they say, can take a master's and get, be a project manager. So everybody can participate, and we can get the community as a whole interested because people want someone to fix their toilets, people want people to build their houses. So everybody will participate. I'm sorry, again, I've extended my time. But that's my idea. So if someone, if you all could all consider it for the sake of our students, just to engage them and engage the parents and the community.
Andy Massey and Dr. Clifford Brown.
My name is Andy Massey, and my comments concern board policy and procedures specifically regarding Policy FF, our favorite one. The April 28th meeting minutes reflect Policy FF being sent back to committee. Since Policy FF is not on this meeting agenda, I seek clarity for the public. When Policy FF is placed back on the agenda, will the policy revision be on its second reading? Or will it be the first? I yield the remainder of my time back to the board, hopefully for an answer.
If y'all want, if you guys don't want his minutes, I'll take it. I am Dr. Clifford H. Brown, a resident of Charleston County. I stand there as a clergy and also an educator in higher education. But also, I want to talk about the renaming of schools after individuals. I've been doing some research along with other clergies. I don't stand alone. I have Pastor Curtis Dayson, moderator of Charleston County Baptist Association, pastor, a vice moderator of New Ashley Baptist Association, and I have Old Ashley, Walter Jenkins, and several other pastors and individuals who have a concern about this. Because the district used a Facebook social media poll where people could vote more than once. I asked you the last time, could you show me the poll that you use in order to come up with it 72%? And why is it that you rather name it after areas instead of individuals? So that we can allow our young people see the impact of leaving a positive life, living a positive life, or being a positive role model within that community. There's been so much bickering among the board. I think it should be among, about the community and the students to influence them, give them some positive influence. I've been coming to the board meetings for years. Yes, this is a new board, but I see some of the same bureaucracy going on within this board. I'm not coming being judgmental, I'm being straightforward. And, Mr. Chairman, I see how you're looking at me. You don't like what I'm saying, but that's all right. I'm going to tell the truth. We're supposed to be adults, and we should act like adults. Thank you.
With that, Ms. Superintendent, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Just one to Dr. Fitzwater earlier. She highlighted in her, some of her comments in the, in the board during the time for the board hearing. Hey to board members, I want to acknowledge that the board has been very transparent about that. Board increases in training and travel and some funds to liaise with the legislative body. I'm going to ask Mr. Prentice, if he would, just to overview for Dr. Fitzwater. And she was speaking in support of such, but for the public, again, and appreciating the board's transparency and getting feedback from the public. Mr. Prentice?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
I sure can. Yes, sir.
So we included earmark contingency of $100,000 in the budget to support the implementation of board pay increases and travel stipends for board members. Largely, that would require an amendment to Policy BID. Both of those areas are addressed in Policy BID. So if it's the will of the board to make that policy amendment subsequent to the budget approval, that we would have the funding in place to address those items. Those were some priorities that were discussed in one of our early budget workshops going into the process, but we didn't want that to be part of the decision for the budget since it was a separate policy established by the board that would need to be amended, and that's where it's referenced.
Thank you. It has allowed the public, again, to be very, the board to be very transparent. And we will discuss with Mr. Holland Shad, the policy liaison, Policy BID, and as needed, bring it forward next month. We'll also get with Reverend Dr. Brown regarding his questions about the social media poll, and we'll have a discussion with Mr. Holland Shad about the status of Policy FF. We brought nothing forward to the board at the board's request until such time as we could get through today's reading of the second budget, but we'll work with Mr. Holland Shad and make sure those things are appropriately noticed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. On to item 6A, Ms. Huggins.
Thank you again, Mr. Grabowski. Tonight's superintendent's report is a little more lengthy than typical. I thank you, board members, for your grace in working with me and asking questions in advance as we go through the superintendent's report. There's a lot to celebrate that's going on in the district, but we've also promised you some transparency around some items, and we've promised the public transparency around some items, and I hope to highlight those generally and quickly tonight so that I can get any questions that you might have. The first slide here is in regard specifically to the attendance pilot that you saw in the news, some of your schools piloted. We had a nine-week pilot in ten of our schools in our efforts to improve attendance. And, oh, excuse me, that's slide three. Let's go on to slide three, and then we'll come back to slide two, Maggie. And we promised to bring back some of the early results of that pilot. You're okay, no worries. I skipped two slides ahead. It's not your problem, it's completely mine. We actually are partnering with a third-party neutral source to analyze the results of that attendance pilot. We got considerable feedback in the public domain, both positive and negative, about, quote, "paying kids for perfect attendance." I will share with you some preliminary information. Data that we've gotten from our third-party analytic company is that the results specifically in our elementary schools over the nine-weeks course were significant. It's a little complex to understand, so I thank you for your patience with me as I go through numbers one, two, three, four, generally. I think the biggest gain we saw, though, is in the second bullet on number three. Overall, the attendance gap between pupils in poverty and non-pupils in poverty over the course of the nine-week pilot nearly disappeared. And folks, we've done everything. I'm looking back at my colleague, Dr. Coakley, whose team has led heroically these efforts for the last two years and has seen significant gains. But that second bullet there summarizes the early overall results of this attendance pilot. If you look in number one, there's a measurable impact on attendance, particularly in the elementary schools. The pilot schools saw nearly, saw an increase equal to about three extra days or seventeen hours more of instruction per student. And at the time we began analyzing, a few weeks were cut off of the pilot, so that analyzation is really only for about six weeks. So kids in poverty, based on their attendance projections, received almost three extra school days or seventeen more hours of instruction per student in those schools than they would generally. And if we look across our system, it would equate to approximately 135,000 additional student days of instruction for kids. Again, it's sort of hard to visualize some of these things, and so we'll break it down, but the public and the news, and some of you have asked me about some early results, and we're working frantically to get these things together as the pilot has now concluded. We saw, of course, different impacts at different grade levels, more significant gains. Mrs. Roberson out at EB Ellington in your area, and Mrs. Bailey at WB Goodwin. Those schools boasting significant perfect attendance that they hadn't seen during the school year. Based on early projections and embargo data, if trends continue specifically in regards to mathematics, we believe you'll be particularly pleased with some of the gains that we've seen in these schools as far as achievement goes. Middle and high school students also saw increases in attendance, but not as significant as our elementary schools. Again, this group is hired to really tell us ROI, so we can think about how and if we invest these sorts of funds moving forward into the new year. Because again, if it don't work, we don't want to use it. Like, our job is not to pretend we found a silver lining and an answer to things. We genuinely want to know what works for kids, so we genuinely can make a difference in kids' lives. But what this company tells us, based on some early analytical algorithms, is that disadvantaged students, over the course of six weeks, multiplied, would have seen about seventeen, eighteen hundred more days of instruction. And our English language learners and our Hispanic students responded particularly well when we break down our student groups. So again, we believe there's been a measurable impact in attendance that has been effective, particularly at the elementary schools. We've seen strong We've seen strong gains, particularly with our Hispanic students. And um, as we think forward, uh, and Mr. Prentice and I, uh, this is hot off the press. In fact, there've been some changes to this slide even since you reviewed it over the weekend, and I apologize for that, but we're getting real-time data um, each and every day. Evidence suggests that there's a strong return on investment at two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a student. Um, again, a strong ROI, particularly compared to some of the interventions that Dr. Coakley uh, and I have budgeted for over the course of the last two years. Signals uh, potential gains and academic outcomes. Again, we're beginning to compare very privately some early projections we have on embargo data, um, particularly around mathematics um, that we already have in regards to SC Ready. And we are going to analyze more to explore academic impacts and what motivates older students. Again, we think we may be on to something, particularly in regards to elementary students. Um, we're going to dig a little deeper with our middle and high school students. I want to thank Jamie Costner in my office, who's really worked a lot with principals. This has been a heavy lift for our principals, who turned this really quickly, who said they wanted to try it, but didn't have time to do the work. So Jamie has been the front person and with a lot of support from Mrs. Roberts and our accountability office, and so I want to thank them very publicly. Maggie, we'll go back a slide. Speaking of student attendance, uh, during our open session, I want to thank Ms. Jewett for working uh, with Mrs. um, Denny on the calendars. Some of you've given us some feedback. Mrs. Jewett gave some extra time over the weekend and again today to talk a little bit about our calendars. You ask us very specifically about early release days and half-days and some data on that. The public, based on our social media post, um, is also very interested in early release and half-days. And so you'll see here that um, students attend more regularly when they're in school a full day. Um, about six-point-six percentage points lower on half-days and early release days, which also tend to be on Fridays. And we do see a decreased attendance overall for students on Fridays. But as we've engaged now with the public on our calendar, I wanted to make sure you had this information, and the public has this information as they vote on those calendar options. Uh, we'll go on to slides, uh, Maggie. As we think about the end of the year, Dr. Coakley and her team really have celebrated uh, throughout the year. We'll have an attendance celebration and another valiant attempt uh, to close the gap and to work with families. On June seventh, again, Dr. Coakley and her team, you see some of the great things they've done here. Miss um, some of our staff featured in the top photo there. But what we've seen through the attendance pilot and the work that Dr. Coakley led, you spoke to this as Ms. Bailey in your comments and Mrs. Lieber, particularly around the engagement of families. We've seen increased parental and community engagement as we've engaged more thoughtfully in our communities. Uh, Dr. Coakley can tell you, depended upon the community she attends, the strategies are different. Mrs. Roberson, for example, excuse me, example, recently attended um, a movie night, I think. Mr. Holland Shad has done some things in his community, Ms. McKinney in hers. So it looks different based on where we are, uh, but we're thankful for the opportunity to engage thoughtfully. And Dr. Coakley, I want to thank you for your tremendous leadership. Next slide, Maggie. You'll see here that um, again, keeping kids in school, and I want to applaud the board for all it's doing, is really contingent upon great educators and having um, educators who are dedicated to improving student outcomes. And this day and age, we get um, educators through a variety of pathways. And last week, I want to thank Mr. Grabowski and his team over at the Yorktown for celebrating all of our teachers who get into education via alternative pathways. It was an excellent night where we recognized first, second, and third-year teachers. We honored our rookie teachers of the year. Again, the most impactful person in a child's life outside of their family, their family unit, is a teacher inside of a classroom. And Mr. Brigman, again, Mr. Holland Shad, has led thoughtfully around getting the most creative and the best into our system in more ways uh, than anywhere in South Carolina. So Bill, thank you for your leadership, and Mr. Grabowski, thanks for being an active part of this celebration. Maggie? Uh, most um, probably what's most uh, the forefront of your brain tonight and that of the public, was our commitment to come forward with a plan of action as the governor recently signed into law R twenty-three of forty, uh, forty-fourteen, which is the abolishment of the constituent school boards that have been placed, been in place since nineteen sixty-four, I believe it is. As the public and you know trustees, the constituent boards were charged with three things, the drawing of attendance line, the approval or review of student transfers, as well as the review of student discipline. And so tonight, I'll generally overview with you for your questions and information for the public, how we plan to transition the duties assigned to the constituent board to district staff and to the Board of Trustees. The first being zoning decisions. Uh, Mr. Barroway and his team, uh, this is, is where this begins. You'll see operations divisions at the top. We'll meet with communities regarding zoning decisions. Again, all of you are elected in certain areas. We will invite you to attend to be thoughtful participants in the conversation about how schools are zoned uh, in your areas. Of course, all of you are welcome to attend all meetings, but we'll ensure that you know when those are and how we're conducting those. We'll draft those zoning recommendations, and then we'll bring them directly to you for approval. So again, function one um, has to do solely with the zoning of attendance lines, and those, those duties will be delegated to you. Secondly, student transfer decisions are assigned to our Department of School Choice. And Ms. Robin Jones, Mr. Bob Olson, I think Ms. Jones and Mr. Olson are here tonight. They worked through Mrs. Roberts' division as currently uh, is the process. Uh, Mr. Olson and Mrs. Jones will work together to facilitate an internal review committee that makes initial decisions regarding transfer requests. As you know, board, you have a policy that's very clear about how um, transfer requests are made and reviewed. Some are very easy, some are a bit more complex. Uh, the team will notify families of decisions. And when decisions want to be appealed, um, because parents disagree, or perhaps there's a hardship about which we might not know, and I got two today, for example, there'll be a hearing panel um, that I'm going to review in just a second, that reviews those appeals. So there'll be an initial review, as there currently exists. Then there'll be an appeal panel. And then, as currently exist, any additional appeal would come to you as the Board of Trustees. Again, just like we currently do. That review panel uh, will take the place, per se, of the constituent board in its neutral review of student appeals that don't necessarily align with the provisions that are specified in the policy. And so again, Mr. Olson, if you'll stick your hand in the air, and Mrs. Jones, their office will lead that process. The third um, assignment given to the constituent board is the review of discipline appeals. Um, so typically what occurs, as you know, uh, there are decisions made in the schools by administrators. If a hearing is needed by the Department of School Support, uh, Dr. Coakley's team manages that. But you're most familiar with appeals that go through the constituent board. The Student Code of Conduct outlines when administrators um, have the ability to move students forward for um, a hearing, per se. And so this really clean, clear-cut um, flowchart here outlines what happens. There's a disciplinary referral within a school. And within three days, if that constitutes a hearing, that goes to Dr. Coakley's team to review. Um, and Dr. Coakley's team does a, a heroic job of turning around and providing feedback to principals those packets. And then um, a hearing panel will be established. Now, across the state of South Carolina and in many states, this duty is assigned to a hearing officer. But as we think about the process that's existed here in Charleston with constituent boards, in an effort to ensure our communities, our families, and our students are served well, we're recommending two, three-member panels. Um, that consist, Maggie, if you'll pop up a slide, that consist of a certified administrator with prior administrator experience, a classified administrator who's familiar with social emotional supports, intervention and prevention, and someone from the community to serve on that panel. So Maggie, back a slide. Once DOS reviews those panel, those packets and receives approval, two CCSD hearing panels will be available to within three to five days hear those hearings. Those hearing panels will report directly to me with a dotted line to Dr. Coakley's team for training, support, oversight, and management, because we believe that to be critically important. If a parent wishes to appeal, so I want to make sure we're clear, we've added another layer here to ensure families and students are treated fairly. There'll be an initial appeal review of the record by Mr. Douglas in our Investigations and Compliance Office, who also reports directly to the superintendent. So Mr. Douglas will be a neutral third-party review um, of any appeals that come after the hearing panel. And then, as is the situation now, any appeals outside of Mr. Douglas's review will come to the Board of Trustees for consideration. So again, student discipline cases follow the three-step process after referral, review of the information by the three-person panel, and two process appeals, as needed, as requested by the parent, to Mr. Douglas first, if necessary, if requested, and then to the Board of Trustees. We believe this will be much more efficient. Maggie, next slide. One more up, Maggie. As we'll conduct hearings every day, Monday through Thursday, between nine and two, and then we will also conduct hearings in the evenings at the request of parents. If a hearing extends beyond two PM, full-time employees will continue and conclude the processes. We will have Fridays reserved for emergent situations and um, hearings that we need to hear, both in-person and virtual. I'm not sure why that just started, but Ms. Simmons, did you start that music on my thing? Girl, bye. Um, I was like, what is that from The Lion King going off on my phone? Um, in-person and virtual options will be available. We encourage families to come in person, but quite frankly, a lot of parents, especially with the DOS hearings, Dr. Coakley, have requested virtual, if I um, had that from you correctly. And again, most hearings um, are scheduled during that day, but an evening optional be, will be available each week. And we say most panels will be convened during the day because in our experience, that has been the request of parents to come during the day. But I want to make sure the public understands that we will have evening options once during the week to hear evening um, hearings, either virtually or in person. Our job is to serve. We want to make sure students and families have due process. More importantly, we want to make sure families and students are served well. In anticipation of the changes um, necessary as a result of the governor signing this bill into law, Mr. Holland Shad, as your policy liaison, is going to be busy, incredibly busy. We have um, several dozen policies that reference the constituent boards. He's so excited about it, he won't even look at me right now. I've waited, Mr. Holland Shad, till after the passage of the budget to disclose this, but um, we do plan. Uh, all staff knows that by May twentieth, these drafts are due to our legal team for review. Uh, Mr. Johnson will be working closely with us as needed. Um, he's even agreed um, knowingly to a special called Policy Review Meeting, early June after graduation. We'll review policies uh, beginning June ninth. To be frank, though, we'll also hold special sessions with small groups of trustees, if interested, to take a more thorough look at these policies, because there are many of them. Some of them only reference the constituent board, but some actually talk about the function of the board, the first reading of the policies, um, if things go well. Um, pending feedback from the board will be June twenty-third. And then there will be a special-called meeting for the second reading of policies later in July, when the board typically takes up any student transfers uh, that might be needed. So I know that was a lot. Again, attendance zone um, assignments go to Mr. Barroway, as they currently do. Student transfer continues to exist with Mrs. Roberts, Mr. Olson, and um, Mrs. Jones. Discipline remains with Dr. Coakley, with dotted lines to me through hearing panels and to Mr. Douglas to ensure neutrality and fairness of processes before appeals all go to the Board of Trustees as currently exist. The last thing we want to um, acknowledge is the hard work of our constituent boards. I have a certificate on my desk, signed by uh, then-Chairman Bustos and uh, Representative Wendell Gilyard. Uh, and we do plan to honor the, the hard work of our constituent board members at the June twenty-third Board of Trustees meeting. Many have given um, more than a decade of service to serving their communities and children, and I want to acknowledge that publicly and thank them for their service. And so you will have a chance to join me on the twenty-third and do just that. I certainly hope they will be in attendance. The last thing before I turn it back over to you, Mr. Grabowski, um, is a celebration of the class of twenty-twenty-five. We don't have all the information in yet. Uh, students, as you see, are still receiving scholarships. We haven't heard from a few of our high schools as we work to put this together. But the class of twenty-twenty-five, as of the putting together of these slides, had earned over sixty-nine million dollars in scholarships, uh, nearly twenty-eight-hundred graduates, um, and well over sixteen-hundred scholarship recipients. We want to thank you, all of you who are planning to join us. Some of you at more than one, some of you, uh, Mr. Grabowski, I think you plan to be at all graduations. We want to thank you for being there to celebrate, uh, I think, the reason you ran for the seat, which is getting kids to where they need to be and preparing them for leaving our system. And we'll begin that on Thursday with four schools, Friday, and then Saturday. The next slide highlights a first for us, which is the graduation of the first cohort of students to graduate from the Scholars Academy that's part of the work at West Ashley High School, a partnership with the College of Charleston. We've put together a short, short video for you to see about the work there. And I want to thank Mr. Comeback for working with me when we uh, got that off the ground several years ago, and Dr. Brandt for continuing the great work. There's now a waiting list of dozens of students waiting to get in there. Um, Mrs. Dangerfield, you'll do us the pleasure.
The last class.
The main goal for us, and as, as the principal of West Ashley High School, as uh, Ms. Swinton, the principal of Burke, one of our neighborhood high schools here in Charleston County, the biggest push was to keep our D-ten and D-twenty students who live in our attendance zone to stay in our attendance zone, rather than leave to go to different places.
I saw the possibility as a wonderful opportunity for a stronger partnership with Charleston County School District. So I talked with the president to see if he agreed, and he did. And, and then I talked with our deans at the time. And they all thought it was just a really great idea to get more connected to Charleston County School District.
We're immediately grabbing a cohort of, of students who, you know, as, in seventh and eighth grade, have demonstrated a strong academic ability, because right in their ninth-grade year, we're, we're putting them in college credit-bearing courses.
The appeal to me was not only being able to be on the College of Charleston campus, but just get those college credits and get myself ahead of the game. Basically, probably being able to graduate from USC in like, a year earlier, which is a large benefit and saves us money, time, effort. I knew I wanted to go to college. I knew I had a long path ahead of me of schooling, because I do want to go to dental school. because I do want to go to dental school after. So I was like, I need to know what it's going to be like, and if I can go ahead and get a jumpstart on that while I'm still in high school. That's something that not a lot of other kids will have. That'll give me a leg up in my academic journey. You can take the classes that you want to take, which you have so many options. You don't have to take a math, science, history and English both semesters. You can take so many different things. You can make your schedule as open or as full as you want to. I've definitely gained just a sense of academic independence. I'm very in charge of how I build my success because of the program. Like, it's taught me to do that, to be an advocate for myself as a student. And obviously, the rigorous coursework has challenged me, so it makes a lot of the schoolwork that I'm doing now feel easier, even though it is so accelerated. Who else do you talk to that's like, oh, yeah, I'm a senior, but I go to the College of Charleston every day. I take my classes. I talk to the professors. And also, if you want to attend College of Charleston, it's like the best choice you could make. Just the best feeling for a student is to see the work that you put out and give to the program. Just you reap the rewards of it, for sure. And I tell the younger kids who are in the program all the time that this is going to change your life, like, in the best way possible, as a person and as a student. We get to go into college basically a year ahead of everybody else, which is such a great opportunity.
So it is a great opportunity for kids. And I want to share with you, Ms. Roberson knows this. She was part of the change to bring a program like this next year to St. John's High School. The partnership is with Charleston Southern University. And so that you're not left out. We haven't formally announced it yet, but we will soon be announcing a partnership with Charleston Southern, also at Stahl and North Charleston High School, in our efforts to keep kids in their neighborhood schools, to fortify schools, and to give kids all that they need to be successful, even when they don't think they can. We believe opportunities like this inspire kids to have access and to know that they can. And so we were really proud of the application process for St. John's this year. We filled 14 of those 20 seats already and anticipate filling all 20. If you see here this inaugural class, and Mr. Comeback will tell you, the first class of anything, you lose students. He was able to maintain most of them, though, in his time there. The 29 seniors this year. There are 53 dual enrollment courses, an average of three each semester. And they have a collective grade point average of 4.79, which is pretty impressive. At the Scholars Academy, in grades nine and 10, students take all honors and AP courses. They're exposed to AP earlier than they would typically. And then in grades 11 and 12, it's all AP. And then that senior year is on the College of Charleston campus. So the seniors in this program at West Ashley are actually on the campus right now taking these courses. And so we thank the board for their continued flexibility to think about outside the box, about how we get kids college and career-ready. You'll see some of these students are staying right here in Charleston. Six of them are going to the College of Charleston as they think about their futures. Some choosing, regrettably, USC and Three Tigers. But nonetheless, I know, I'm sorry, Dr. Temple, I'm not even looking at you. And Ms. I know, Ms. Roberson, I'm sorry, forgive me. But you'll just see here, I'm sorry, Mr. Barrowey. It's right up there to the end. I guess I'm going to have to start advocating for some other schools here. But nonetheless, we're really proud of the great work that our children are doing and that we're doing to close the gap and provide access and opportunity. So apologize for the late tonight, Mr. Grabowski. Just a lot to celebrate this season and a commitment to make sure the board understands our thoughts around the transfer of constituent board duties. I'll turn it back over to you for any questions trustees might have.
Any questions to the superintendent, I mean, board members?
I do.
Ms. Stewart.
I'll try to be quick.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Stewart.
I'll go backwards, I think. So what's the difference between the scholars and AP? Is it just that it starts earlier, or?
That's a great question. And so it's an accelerated pathway program to get kids really through most of the requirements for graduation in the first two years to allow them to focus more on a pathway of study in their junior and senior year and on the college campus that affords them the opportunity to build those credits towards whatever they want to do post-secondary. So it really accelerates their pathway. And I love that Mr. Comeback was so strategic and visionary in that when he started to build and keep kids in the West Ashley feeder pattern, his message to parents were, hey, we're offering the same things here to your students that they can get, quite frankly, at some of our other choice and magnet schools, and that maintained them in their neighborhood school. And so we expose them to AP right out of the gate, which we also do at some other schools. But they have opportunities early on for those dual-credit opportunities as opposed to some others. So it's an accelerated pathway that really challenges kids to think critically.
And then is there an increasing cost for this, to be at certain schools?
So there is. We partner with the College of Charleston, and we have a new partnership with CSU for dual enrollment. And we have a memorandum of understanding with them, MOUs, which outline, there are some increased expenses for these sorts of programs, but we've allocated them in the budget because we believe that resources need to be in schools and neighborhood schools to build the programs for the students in all areas of the district. So we do, and I'm happy to break down the cost for you, Ms. Stewart, in the board brief.
Okay. And then, I guess, what's the process of adding it to another school in D-2, or, you know, in all the different?
It's a great question. So we're very strategic about what we add and where we add it based on community feedback and what in the feedback kids are giving us. And so this started at West Ashley and Burke. It hadn't as attracted as many students at Burke, which we hope to revitalize, being very blunt with the board and the public. But Johns Island, you know, we've had a renewed commitment to academics, athletics and the arts there. And so this was the opportunity to really try to keep kids who are ad hoc from going to academic magnet and other places. And then we've noticed more and more need for these sorts of programs. The program at Stahl and North Charleston won't look exactly like this. It's different. But again, it's based on the needs of that school community, the feedback from parents, the feedback from students and their guidance counselors, and our work with the administration. And so as soon as we're ready to tell more about that CSU partnership, we'll share it with you. Great questions, Ms. Stewart. What else do you have?
Going back to the other parts, as far as the constituent board stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
How will this review panel be chosen? And will we have any ability to have any say? And also, will there be parameters for the requirements for these panels as far as what their background is? Not the second panel, but the first one.
It's a great question, Mrs. Stewart. And there'll be two panels altogether of three people, and they'll receive extensive training from Dr. Coakley and her team around the student code of conduct, South Carolina laws and regulations. And there will be an application process for some of the positions, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Coakley to talk a little bit about our thought processes as we budgeted for this. Because, you know, we budgeted in the FY26 budget for this, and Mr. Prentice is on if he needs to add any information. Dr. Coakley, turn it over to you, and thank you for your work around this.
So the first position, which is a certified administrative position, with service as Senior Hearing and Placement Coordinator, and that could be a current administrator in the district or a retired administrator who could apply for the position. We already have one individual in the Senior Hearing and Placement Coordinator role, so that individual would move over from the DOS review side to the student discipline or the CCSD hearing review side. So we would need to fold the second Senior Hearing and Placement position. The second role, which is the classified administrator, that's someone who has a background in mental health, social worker, prevention intervention, restorative practices, anyone with that type of background. We would be looking for two individuals with that position. That would be a posted job with the job description. And then the part-time members, anyone who's linked to CCSD, Charleston County, the community, neighborhood, have a background in community service, action-oriented, so forth, would be able to apply for those positions.
Great questions, Ms. Stewart.
And then is there, obviously, there's a cost increase. Is there any way we can see that specifically?
Absolutely. Mr. Prentice, are you still able to join us?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Would you generally overview how we've allocated for all of this in the FY26 budget, please, sir?
Sure. So understanding that the constituent board bill was going to be signed into law, we went ahead and moved forward with dissolving the costs associated with some of those elements accordingly in the budget, which was approximately $630,000. And then we created the allocations for the hearing panel in the budget that's been described. And so there was actually net decrease in cost associated with that of about $300,000, in addition to realigning some of the existing allocations within Dr. Coakley's office to be able to constitute two panels.
Okay, great. And then my last thing is to follow up on is all the way at the top. Did you guys see a difference in academic grades for the students that came back that were back in school more?
Mrs. Stewart?
All right, I'm like.
No, 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 no. Your questions are great. So what we want to do is really measure not only the grades that are assigned to students, but also the growth that we saw from those students either on iReady or MAP, and their proficiency on SC Ready. And so that's going to be part of the study when we have all the results back. So this is just the preliminary, what we know about the attendance and how the increased improved attendance equated to hours or days. But we'll bring back the grades as soon as we have them. Because, again, the goal of this is to not only approve attendance, but also student outcomes. So once we have that quantitative data in hand and analyzed, we'll bring it back to the board.
Okay. And then did the attendance drop immediately after the funding stopped?
You know what, Ms. Stewart, I don't know the answer to that question. But we're in that window right now. Because we're in that window, the pilot just recently ended. But we will bring that back to you as well.
And then how many students approximately would be paying the 225 for, if we were to move forward with something like this?
Jamie, do you know how many? So if we move forward, we're not quite sure because we would want to be really strategic about in which schools we
And how.
And how. So if we see more improved outcomes in elementary than middle and high, for example, it might be an elementary-only implementation. And it might be more in schools of high poverty because that's where we see that it makes the biggest impact than not. We just need to wait to see the final data to think about how we implement, if at all, in the fall with students. But we will be very transparent about it along the way because if it really doesn't work, we really don't want to do it. We want to figure out what does, right, Dr. Coakley? So we'll be back. I don't mean to put you off, I just don't have all the numbers quite yet. But we will.
Okay.
Great questions. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Roberson? Or Dr. Temple?
Dr. Temple.
Dr. Temple?
Okay, all right. The first question I have relates to the dollars that we were giving students for attendance. One piece, like Ms. Stewart's questions as well. But we'd like to know how, what did people spend the money on?
That's a great question.
Of, you know, we really need to know. We need that picture to understand why these dollars made a difference and how it helped the students and the families.
That's a great question, Dr. Temple. So so that the public is aware, we have an ability to see how the money is spent. And we also have the ability to block certain places of purchase, so where the money can be used. And what we saw overwhelmingly is that student, that the monies were used to pay bills, to buy groceries, for transportation and those sorts of things. Did we see a few things that made us scratch our head? Maybe so. But overwhelmingly, based on the reports that we received, we saw the money going to food, transportation, and to pay bills. We saw some people hold their money till they got in three weeks, and then they paid a water bill, for example. So we have the ability to track it that granularly.
Things systemically we can do, then that will be helpful. And maybe not, but I think that would be really helpful for people to be aware of why this money made a difference, not only on attendance, but what difference it made to the families and the students. The second thing is around the calendar. The data seems really clear that early release attendance is better on early release days versus a half-day. The outlier, of course, is the April early release day. So maybe we need to, and I was wondering, like, okay, now that we have this data, is there anything that the calendar? I know we're in the process of getting feedback on the calendars, but is there anything that the calendar committee would see based on this data that they might change a calendar or two?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We do believe that between this and the feedback we're getting, certainly some of the online comments that we've gotten on some of our social media platforms, we know that this is probably, parents are most interested in the half-day and the early release days, and want to provide us the most feedback, for which we're grateful.
Okay, good. So we'll get that.
Yes, ma'am. We'll definitely send it back to the calendar committee for their consideration and review.
Okay. And I want to thank you for all the work on the, you know, transition from the constituent boards to how we're going to now handle all these special jobs in the district. A little concerned about the part-time employees. You know, how part-time will they be? Is this a lot of part-time employees? That kind of thing. So I think we'll have to tease that part out.
Sure, we can work a little more on that, Dr. Temple. Thank you for that question.
I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Bailey, do you have any questions? Oh. I was just shaking it up. Ms. Roberson?
Okay. I'm going to just start. I have another question where I was going to start, but I'm going to pick up where Dr. Temple left off about flushing out the part-time employee. My concern with, I believe you said that the hearing panel is going to report directly to you with a dotted line to Dr. Coakley. So you're taking on six new employees.
So thank you. I appreciate you caring about my workload, Mrs. Roberson. So there'll be two arms of Dr. Coakley's office. But I'll make it really clear to the hearing panel at Dr. Coakley's request that, for the sake of neutrality and the public perception, that there's always a line to me with concerns. But the day-to-day, we'll report to this young woman over here. There'll be two arms of Dr. Coakley's office. One that handles review packets, and then this other side that never touches the packets until the packet makes it to that side. It's sort of how Greenville is aligned in that the panels have a direct link to Dr. Royster as needed, but report day-to-day. And so Dr. Coakley has agreed to take this additional step on.
Okay. Because I was just thinking, that's a lot of people.
It is.
Yeah.
And Dr. Coakley, I don't, Dr. I wish we could because if we could clone her, there'd be four of her already. And Dr. Coakley is really an expert in this work, and I'm not. And I value her leadership very much.
And, and then my second question stays right with that disciplined hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
The initial review stage, I believe that's what it's called?
Yes, ma'am.
Would that person have the authority to overturn the hearing panel's decision?
That's a great question, Ms. Roberson. That initial review phase actually is when the packet's received. Dr. Coakley, will you, will you talk about what your team does when they get that packet to start?
I know what you're talking about, Ms. Roberson. I was gonna clarify.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
So the initial review appeal, yes. So that would go to the Office of Investigations and Compliance led by Mr. Douglas. And so he would review the record, the audio recording, the testimony that was presented, any video evidence and so forth. He would review that information and make a decision if he's going to uphold the decision of the C C S D hearing panel or overturn that decision. No different than if it was going to the next level of the constituent board. If the parent wishes to still, or school wishes to still appeal it after that decision has been made, then it moves forward to the Board of Trustees for that final stage of approval.
Okay, so he's now the administrator that could appeal.
Yes.
The parents could appeal. Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Roberson. I didn't understand your question. I'm sorry.
I think that's, it's important for the public to understand.
Absolutely.
With that, yeah.
Yes.
We are now replacing people with what was already in place.
Yes, ma'am.
That was not clear.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Coakley.
Okay, so now I'm gonna go back to graduation. So a year doesn't pass that I'm not approached by someone at one of my schools, and it probably happens at other schools, when we have students at their home school, that's the, they are ranked number one. And then, once we pull in the early college students, those students are bumped. And so folks come to me all the time because
I understand.
Yes. I think as a board, our administration, I'm not sure when that policy came into place. But maybe it's time for us to look at how we are going to move forward with that, because that's very hurtful that those students are at their buildings for the entire high school years. They are ranked number one, and then record, then scores come in and they're pushed to number two. And, and the other thing that's also shared with me is that, that person that's at another school, they're not connected to that base school, but yet they get to have that honor. And I think that we really need to look at that a little differently.
Thank you, Mrs. Roberson. That certainly is a conundrum. The challenge there exists in that there's no win-win solution for everybody in that situation in that. And this problem has existed up in Ori County, the early college high school there and the Scholars Academy there. At some point, it's just recently in the last three years transitioned to its own standalone school. In fact, it might have only been two years ago, but it's an age-old problem that has existed for nearly two decades in Ori County. And the issue is that while those students are enrolled in their base schools, those schools get the benefit of those students' E O C scholar, you know, all the things associated. So principals are least resistant, less resistant to allow this program, which is different and allows for these opportunities. Because, again, those students are still, and with their, they add value with, with that, and they still get to participate in their base school sports and that sort of thing, which the early college doesn't have. But then, on the other side of that coin, you have the situation that you just eloquently described, which is Anita's been to early college for four years and maybe hasn't been active at West Ashley High School, and then comes back to West Ashley High School, and because of the opportunities afforded, graduates first versus, you know, number two and number three who've been vouchsaw all along. So it is a challenging situation, and it's something Dr. F, if you and Mr. Comeback will take note, we can certainly revisit with high school principals after graduation. But again, you, again, it's really hard. You eloquently describe it. It's, it's challenging. And it's, it, there's no win-win. If we make it a standalone school, you know, there are things you there are things you have to add there. Principals lose. And that's really why we're trying to fortify neighborhood schools, so these similar opportunities exist there, starting with West Ashley, Burke, John's Island, and soon to be North Charleston High and Stoll.
So it's a fair competition.
So it's more even equal playing, playing field. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So thank you for those questions.
And my last question, I think it's an ops question.
Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead, Mr. Barrowey.
So, zoning. Well, maybe, I don't know if it's a zoning question, or I'm just gonna say it. Since we're looking at all things reorg. In my area, there's a lot of developments that's going out. And when we had someone from your office to do a presentation, they told us that our numbers in that particular district is going down over the next five years. And so maybe this is something that you could get back with me on, on, but what, what it shows is that with all the subdivisions that's going up in Ravenel, Hollywood, and one seventy-four, that none of the students are going to enroll in District Twenty-three. The numbers were decreasing as the numbers were being projected. And so we're, what we're trying to figure out is where those projections are coming from. And the district's saying that nobody is going to go to schools in District Twenty-three.
So I'll make a comment, ma'am, just in regards to how those numbers are generated. We meet with municipalities and their agencies that support their projected growth on a regular basis. We meet with the representatives from Hollywood. We meet with the representatives of Ravenel. That those numbers can change. We meet with them at least twice a year. One of the organizations is very current, one of the organizations we need to meet up with again. I will say to your point about that area, when I got here eleven years ago, the first comment I got from District Twenty-three was, you better build a mega school right now. It's eleven years, and the numbers can, can continue to decline. It's just to the point, we have to continue to monitor it on a regular basis. We match up those, the numbers of developments that are planned with the numbers of kids that are representative in those homes, divided by thirteen grades, and have to take into account the live and attend in that that area's experienced over the course of time to have a practical number. So although those numbers do show as projecting down, we'll continue to evaluate them. And there's, there's a chance they could be going back up, but we're not gonna arbitrarily change them until we have that specific data to show that. If you're interested in seeing specific numbers and how we've looked at those, I, I would welcome a face-to-face, we can walk through those numbers with you, show you what developments we have in the books. And I will just add one last thing. When we know a development has been approved and it's a significant number, we'll actually call the developer and find out what their build plan is. And we've done that in West Ashley is an example with what's going on in, in Long Savannah. So I, I welcome that opportunity. But I will say that of all the areas that we've projected over the last eleven years, District Twenty-three has been pretty accurate to this point in the time that I've, in the time that I've been here.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Two questions. Well, one of you already answered. My question was about the money that the students receive
Yes, ma'am.
for attendance. Now, that's two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. How is that paid?
That's a great question, Ms. Bailey. And it's twenty-five dollars a week if you, if you're in school all five days. And if you're out sick, you're not, I mean, if you're out, you're not eligible for any reason. It's twenty-five. It was twenty-five dollars over ten weeks for a total of two twenty-five. And we gave families debit-like cards, and the cards were reloaded as the students had perfect attendance.
That's why I wanted to find out how you were tracking that, to, to know specifically
Yes, ma'am.
what was being spent on.
Yes, ma'am. And then we get the reports. We get these big stacks of things in the office, and I'm like, here come the stacks again. And we go through them to see how the, the monies are spent, because we, we get, we can tell how every installment is spent. You know, within reason. I mean, we can't tell down to the groceries, like you bought milk, eggs, and cheese, but we can see that you bought groceries, sorts of things.
Okay. And my last question was, okay, you had sixteen or seventeen slides on the superintendent report, because I was looking at one of them, it's, I think it was meetings and times, and it wasn't on our, our list. There's a slide missing.
Meetings and times.
Yes, it's when the hearing panels are gonna meet.
Yeah.
We don't have that slide.
Oh, you know what? I think
Yeah, you have a, a different.
Is it Slide Eleven, nine to two?
Correct.
It's, it's nine to, nine to two. If, if, if I excluded something, Ms. Bailey, I'll go back and check it. Sorry, we made revisions up to the last second. I tried to give you the meat of it. I and again, I, I always put my, this off till it's the last thing so that I make sure the board's ready for all their other business, but I'll make sure that it's back in there. But it's Monday through Thursday, nine to two. And then, again, an option every week for evening hearings as well as requested. And then we hold Fridays for carryover hearings or emergent situations that Dr. Coakley deems necessary.
Okay, because my question was, are we allowed to attend those or to see them, or that's just something for the three-person panel?
Great question. To maintain your quasi judicial role in the event it gets to you as an appeal, you wouldn't want to have any prior knowledge, Mrs. Bailey. And so those will be maintained in Dr. Coakley's office, and then if there's an appeal on that side of her office, and then if there's appeal to Mr. Douglas, and then to you as the final decision maker. Great question. Thank you.
Ms. Lieber?
Thank you, Superintendent Huggins. Thank you for your report.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Lieber.
All right. Well, watch the clock.
Mrs. Danny's gonna upload the, the other one now so that you have the most recent version. Go ahead, Ms. Lieber.
Can we reset my clock? I don't know if I need it. All right. The, the one thing I, I love to see the fact is we're continuously trying to improve student outcomes. And I continue to go back to my nerdy self, and I love Ms. Roberts, is that I still desire to see a regression analysis to show the correlation of how students achieve, you know, truancy, parent involvement, teachers, W S F, learning models, whether they have learning disabilities, start time, curriculum, language competencies, Head Start, and school configuration. So I continue to desire that. In fact, it'd be, I'd be thrilled if every PowerPoint came up with the correlation based on the regression analysis and, and how important these things get weighed in our decisions from the board. Number two, question was, that came to me is, how do we know the students and the parents are spending it and they're not doing, passing this on to somebody else?
We don't.
Okay. Okay, so now the discipline area. I appreciate your response to many of my questions.
It's all good. I do the best.
And I'm a rah 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 for the timeline. The other thing that I wanted just to continue on is, I'm, I'm kind of concerned that whether, it seems like there's two part-time employees, I think we possibly would need to increase that to a much larger pool to get more diversity in the way the hearings are happening. And, and maybe that was already in the plan. I don't really know.
We appreciate the feedback. So just to give you an idea, we feel like we've been generous in how we've established this. There's two hearing officers in Greenville that have heard fifteen hundred cases in a year. So we think that we're well-staffed.
All, all right. Two more points on that is
But we, our, our goal is continuous improvement. So we're gonna assess the situation because we want this process to go very, very well for our children and their families. And so we're gonna constantly look at this process and refine our process. If it's not right, Dr. Coakley has, she knows she can call me directly. She works well with Dr. Clamp. And again, the, another reason for the little dotted line, perhaps to me, Mrs. Roberson, not to Dr. Coakley, but so that I can get that feedback on an ongoing basis.
All right. Another question would be, I didn't see the education to temporary virtual and that path to do that, or whether there was some other model that would be successful for children.
So the options for the hearing panels aren't included here at all. But the options for the hearing panel to consider will be similar to those now. Dr. Coakley, if you, I mean, for example, students can be assigned, Dr. Coakley, you know better than I do, to D J A, L H A. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Yes. So when it, currently, when a student commits a Level Three infraction, they can automatically be sent to turn in our T V P, which is Temporary Virtual Placement. State Regulation Fifty-nine sixty-three two forty states that we don't even, we are not even required to provide additional services to the student when they are waiting to hear. And it could be suspended until the hearing. In Charleston County School District, we do not operate under that, that premise. We provide our students with the education from the time of the incident until the time of the hearing. We have a certified teacher who provides that in-person or virtual session with our scholars. If it's a Level Two incident, the student serves the suspension and is returned back to school. But for Level Three incidents, which I would like to remind the board, the State Department of Education considers that to be a criminal offense. So we see it as students need to be separated from the school while we're waiting for a hearing, but not necessarily suspended or removed from access to their academics. As far as the other options, we will continue to use the options that are available to us within our district. We provide a plethora of options in comparison to other school districts. Our expulsion rate in for our district is the lowest among all other districts around the area, because our goal is to make sure we provide those wraparound support services, but also give a consequence where necessary.
Thank you, Dr. Coakley, for that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You answered my fifth question, but I appreciate the district's compassion when it comes to educating kids in a situation like this.
Mr. Hollingside?
Thank you, Ms. Lieber, for those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make this brief as possible, sir. First, I need to reflect back. You just said something that brought back memories to me. When you mentioned Long Savannah, I was chair of the County Parks and Recreation when Mayor Riley came to us to be a part of Long Savannah. And I can remember the school options that were being talked about, because we had to buy into Long Savannah to make that deal work. It's amazing. It's been thirty years now. Ain't nothing been done out there yet. It's still dirt. It's moving now, but that's been thirty years ago. That kind of tells you, tells you my age. I want to thank Dr. Carol Temple. This, this question is for you, for her coming out and supporting me, and the board members that actually reflected with me the other day on, on the incident that happened in my neighborhood, dealing with youth. You talk about the the payment of twenty-five dollars was very minor, and I want to make sure that when she stepped out. But, you know, if the parent in a, in a low-income family uses that money to help their household, that's what happens. You know, I'm a single parent. When my wife passed away, even though I carried the bills in my household, my children got to do what they wanted to do with their money. But I don't micromanage something small as that in an African-American household, which usually may basically in poverty areas. So the, the thing that I want to see us get to in the future is this. I know it's not gonna happen today, but I'd like to see it within the next two years. We need to be able to come up with a community partnership that takes some of these kids and, and, and do the measurement goals that you have, I want to say doctor, I'm almost done. Anita?
Yes, sir.
That takes these children and allow them to work with community partners in the neighborhood to earn an income. And then tie it back into the schools of behavior and standards in the school of conduct to make that child grow. Because there has to be some consequences and rewards. If we're able to do that, I can remember when I was young, I think I told you about the CEDR program, and I worked in the CEDR program, and I used that to buy my school clothes. We have got to find ways to, to expand a young person's mind and to make them see the goals and the outcomes. Because if we don't do that, then we're not doing ourselves any good. We have it here over a billion-dollar agency, but we can, we can do better, and we can grow even better. We just have to expand our mind, that's all.
I don't disagree with you all, Mr. Hollingshead, and please take this as, we're glad you're still here with us, sir, to be quite honest, after what happened in your neighborhood. So we're glad you're here and thank those for standing with you. And I think no, Dr. Cokely is committed to that same thing. She's already developing some partnerships um, through our local, our local-like program for our alt schools to do just that. Um, and we're really excited about that. And when we have the details, we can share it um, uh, more publicly with the board, but some things are already in progress. Mr. Hollingshead, I give us some earlier comments that you made to me because we do believe that even though students are um, at DJA or LHA or wherever they might be, that um, they still deserve access and opportunity just like other kids. And we want to, to, to pour into them so they have just what you suggested. And so thank you, sir. I've got it noted here. We'll follow up with you.
Ms. McKinnney? And I have none. Great report.
Thank you.
Trustees, good input.
Again.
We will move on to uh, audit and finance. And the first item up is seven A. For the board is a motion to approve the Head Start early Head Start financing report and credit card expenditures for October twenty twenty-four through March of twenty twenty-five. Do you have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
I'll open it for debate. Is there any debate? Any questions? Hearing none, I'll put it up for a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Quick, huh? Onto item seven B, which the question before the board is a motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution regarding the twenty seventeen twenty-two, twenty-two capital program phase for sales tax, capital maintenance, technology budget reallocation. Do you have a motion?
Don't move.
Second? Any discussion?
I, I do.
Ms. Jewett?
Um, so as far as student mobile devices, what exactly is that?
So I don't see Mr. Prentice on the line, but as far as.
Mr. Prentice?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, um, so the, the two-line items there, the student mobile devices is the refresh of our computers in our CTE computer labs. That's just the category that that falls under.
Okay, and then technology infrastructure is different than that?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Um, that is uh, two, two items. One is the uh, mobile panic system that Mr. Burrowey could speak on uh, more directly. And then the second part of it, approximately five hundred thousand dollars of that amount, is a replacement of the time clocks throughout the district uh, that are up for refresh.
Why is that costing two million more than it was approved?
So I can, I can comment on it, Mr. Prentice. So this is an upgrade to the existing system. It's providing all-new technology for our teachers. This panic button, button system was investigated by Mr. Reidenbach and his team extensively. Uh, this provides each teacher with a, each faculty member with a badge that allows them two sources of support. One is for the front office and one is for a nine-one-one in the event of an active shooter. So this technology provides them with a badge, provides the strobloids within each school and the support technology that goes with that. So it's buying this system that upgrades our current programs.
Ms. Jewett, after, that's a great explanation, Mr. Burrowey. I want to thank Mr. Reidenbach and his team for the work they've done. After every um, school shooting crisis, Ms. Jewett, or any school crisis, uh, our, our team led by Mr. Reidenbach does a thorough review of what happened in, in September at Appalachia. I think it was September.
Yes, ma'am. Appalachia, last year.
Um, one of the key takeaways from that was the merit of the panic button system. And there was an outcry at the time before you came to the board from, from our parents that um, you know, wanted us to consider this. And again, Mr. Reidenbach and his team do a really thorough investigation of um, what went wrong, what went right, what are we doing? And how could we improve that perhaps? And this is one such takeaway. So again, I want to acknowledge the work that he and his team led. Thank you for the question.
Any other question from any trustees? Hearing none, Ms. Trudy could please bring it up for a vote? Trustees, please cast your vote.
Me? Oh, I already did. I already did.
You want a voice vote?
Yes, yay.
And the motion passes. Onto item seven C. The question before the board is a motion to approve the distribution of the Laura Brown funds. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second? Any discussion regarding this motion? Anything in opposition? Hearing none, I'd ask for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Finally, for audit, seven D is proposed. Question before the board is a motion to approve the proposed audit and finance meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second? Any discussion in opposition to the motion? Hearing none, I'd like to bring it up for a vote and ask for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. We will now move on to item eight A, which is the motion to convene into executive session to consider and receive legal advice on matters involving proposed contractual arrangements, student placement, pending or potential legal claims, or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege. Do you have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the executive session and return to the regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
To move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we now return to regular meeting. Onto item 11A, which is an Audi. The board is asked to consider parents' requests that student be allowed to remain enrolled as an Audi County resident. Do I have a motion?
A move that the student may be allowed to stay provided tuition is paid by the parent. Provided by the parent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, can't have any discussion. Move for a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, the motion passes. Onto item 11B, which is a foreign exchange student request at North Charleston High School. Do I have a motion?
A move that the student is allowed to enroll at North Charleston High School in the 11th grade for the entire 2025-2026 school year.
Make the most.
Do I have a second?
Second.
For a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, the motion passes. Next is item 11D, it's contractual matter regarding a charter renewal. Do I have a motion?
A move that the charter renewal application for Allegro Charter School of Music. For the direct our legal services to negotiate a 10-year contract with the provision that we will have a report from the school in one calendar year.
Ooh, I think we did the wrong motion.
Is that?
It's this unit, sorry.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, you said Allegro. Yeah. All right. May we strike that?
Strike that, and we'll go back. Since this is item 11D, it's a motion to approve the charter of the contract between East Cooper Montessori. Do I have a motion?
A move to approve the charter contract between East Cooper Montessori School and Charleston County School District.
Second.
You want to put that one up for vote, Ms. Trudy? Trustees cash your vote. And the motion passes. Onto item 11E, motion to approve the charter renewal application for Allegro Charter School. Do I have a motion?
A move to approve the charter renewal application for Allegro Charter School of Music and direct the legal services to negotiate a 10-year contract. The Allegro Charter School of Music shall report to the CCSD Board in one year to give a status report on the progress of the school.
Mr. Trudy, please put that up for vote. Trustees cash your vote. And the motion passes. Onto item 12, which is consent agenda has been approved, so all items listed under this are adopted. We will move on to item 13, which is the upcoming meetings, 13.
Right.
Yeah, 13A. The June 4th, 2025 is Autumn Finance. June 9th is the Committee of the Whole. June 23rd is the monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees. There will be a special meeting which we will work with the trustees to schedule regarding the procurement matters. So I'd ask the superintendent and staff to work with us on that one. With that, onto the wonderful item 13B. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Hmm.